Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll stand for the singing of O Canada.
(singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see rise the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our hand, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Any declarations of conflict of interest? And once again, you can declare just before an item comes up. And approval of agenda. So I just wanted to ask this. Grants to organizations. Linda has printed off the sheets that she put together. If we want to take care of that tonight, we can do that. We can certainly wait. I'm sure some organizations are getting a little bit antsy about getting their funding out. So what is your wish?
I'm in favor of looking after it this evening.
Okay. Is anybody opposed to looking after it this evening? No. Okay, go ahead.
So you've established the amount that's available. The funding comes out of next fiscal year, which is in about three weeks' time. You can approve the grants if you wish tonight. We can notify folks of the decision. But no checks will be written until April 1st.
Okay, so I will add that under additions. We'll do grants to organizations. And I just, what's that? Yeah, we could. Okay, go ahead Deputy.
In addition, your worship, and maybe it might come under, might come under questions for committee chairs, but just one to the C A O. And there might be a motion coming out of both the internal audit.
Okay.
And the other one, it might be a matter of procedure. Just a real estate matter that I took notice of in the paper over the last couple of weeks. And maybe we might have a short discussion and just ask for some direction on that. Thank you.
So under questions for committee chairs, I'm going to put the internal audit, so you can do that then.
And maybe put the real estate at the same thing. That'd be more for, just see what direction we take on that.
Okay, good. All right. Anything else? Okay, go ahead Counselor Hood.
Your worship, there was a letter that was addressed to the mayor and copied to the councilors from Frank Sonier. About four pages or five. And Mr. Sonier had a number of topics that he covered, but mostly in the area of trying to further this concept of a urban rural center here in Yarmouth and things that, so I'm wondering what happened to that. It's not been on the public agenda yet.
Can we add that to the next committee of the whole? Okay, I have that on my desk.
Thank you, that would be good.
So we're gonna do that. Linda, you make note of that and we'll get that. Thank you Counselor.
We will accept the agenda with the additions, your worship.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Counselor Hood, can you just, just your light. I have a question before I forget. Tomorrow, we have a regional meeting. Can I see who's going? One, two, three, four. Good. Yep, good. Nope, just checking on, just checking on numbers. Okay, good. Agenda's been approved. Okay, approval of minutes. Public hearing February 9th, 2017. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, February 9th, 2017. Moved and seconded?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And Committee of the Whole, February 23rd. So moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Presentations. Dog Park Committee report. So we have somebody coming forward to do that. I see Paul in the audience. Welcome, gentlemen. If you would make sure that you speak close to the microphone and introduce yourselves. And welcome to council.
Is this close enough?
It certainly is.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Paul will be making the presentation on behalf of the Dog Park Committee. But I thought perhaps, and Morris Lloyd, and your acting advisor on planning, I guess you'd call it. And I thought perhaps I'd take a few minutes just to say how we got here. And this goes back to a committee of the whole in December of 2015, when the council agreed to make property at 28 Jarvis Road available for a dog park and to initiate the process for the design of the dog park. And I can move forward to October of last year, when I arrived here to provide a little help to your planning director, Caroline Robertson. The contract had been issued to uplands plus design, to design the dog park and work with the local, the citizens committee. But the contract had not been, no, nothing had been done on the contract. The events kind of closed in on Caroline, as you all know. And the C A O. asked me if I could look after the contract and get the design completed. And it was with a great deal of pleasure. I did that. Had a very good local committee to work with. The design is attached to your agenda tonight, and I think it's a pretty good piece of work. It respects the people in the community. There's a 25-meter buffer all around the dog park itself, where the natural vegetation that's there now will remain. And I know that's important to some people in the area, because I've met with at least one gentleman and we talked it out quite thoroughly. Within that, there is a design for a park that has an enclosure for small dogs and one for large dogs. And there's a place for a little natural park. And if you come to the park with, say, a child, you can leave the child there to play and see everything in the dog parks from there and watch your dog and whatever you have to do. I think it's a good design. There's long-range planning left to perhaps develop a trail that will hook into the Broadbrook Trail. And that'll become part of the total trail system in the town. So that's before you. I don't know if you have to formally approve it, but it's there for your information. I've also met a number of times with the citizens committee, with the community committee. And they have elected Paul Trask as their chair to speak for them. And they, I think, want to take it from here and make some comments and suggestions as to how it might be made to happen. And from what I see, it's gonna move ahead quite well. So that's just a little introduction, your worship. They can answer questions if you like, but I think it's fairly straightforward.
Thank you very much.
I'll turn it over to Paul.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors, Deputy Mayor. My name is Paul Trask. I have been elected the chairman and probably spokesperson for the Dog Park Committee, a project that I've been working on for probably close to five years, through different groups and everything else, and trying to put things together to have this happen. I'd like to thank council and the previous council for getting us this far. And a very special thank you from myself to Caroline for actually kicking us in gear and pushing it this far as well. And I know she's probably watching this evening. Basically, we need it approved to, and they took steps in the P A C. meeting, so that you can put the park there. There's no additional adjustments to the dog bylaw, because that's gonna be covered under 20, where are we? 24D, within a town public park where the area is designed by signage as an area which dogs are permitted to be without leash, subject to such limitations are posted. And we do have about 30 rules and guidelines for that, such as the dog has to be leashed going to the park. There's gonna be double entry gates, so the dog can't escape. There's only basically two fenced areas within the park, because one of the local residents' concerns was he liked to have wildlife go into his property, which is adjacent to the dog park property. So the two dog parks are gonna be encased in a fence. And the playground is going to have a fence around it, because that's going to back off into a drainage ditch that is used for water management for Argyle Street. What we'd like to ask from you folks, there's quite a significant culvert that has to be put in in the front, which was designed by the town engineer and put into the plan. And some tree removal and site grading, because the contractor that did the work on the street left several piles of rubble, which could probably be leveled off and used in the parking lot. That's gonna come to about $11,550. And our total in Phase 1 is $192,500, which we intend to raise through fundraising, community asset donation program. I've spoken to quite a few people. They're all in favor of this. They love the plan. And they want to see it go forward. And we've got some major commitments from both local pet stores. And it's only gonna go from there. Are there any questions that any of you would like to put forward?
Counselor Hood?
I've got one question. So what's the linkage or connection between the planned dog park, two-part dog park, and the Broadbrook Trail again? Was it intended that people will utilize the Broadbrook Trail as well as part of the park?
That is one of our end goals, is to have a trail that goes from the Broadbrook system into a set of trails that we have for the park. And have the park as, see, there's not only a playground, the two dog parks, but we're also going to have a section in the center with picnic tables and everything for people to have a lunch. It's going to actually help make Yarmouth a tourist destination for people with pets, especially dogs. There is nowhere right now that you can take your dog and let it run legally.
People do it on Main Street every night.
Yes.
Well, so...
But people using this park are gonna be the responsible dog owners.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are the dogs gonna be on leash when they're in the Broadbrook Park?
They would have to be.
And are they on a leash when they're in the dog park or not?
When they're in the confines of the two dog areas, no. That's why there's double entry gate system.
So my concern is dogs that aren't on a leash in the Broadbrook Park. It's a very personal concern, but I have that concern.
That would be against your bylaw and nothing that we're promoting. If I go back to, one of the rules that we want to put in place for the park, where is it? Owners must carry a leash at all times. Dogs must be leashed when entering and leaving the off-leash areas of the park.
All right, thank you. I think I got the picture. That's good.
Because our concern is, as dog owners, you have a playground. I have a 120-pound Labrador Husky that likes to play with, that loves kids. You don't want a 120-pound Labrador Husky running up to a kid, knocking it over and licking its face. So we want safety for our animals as well as for everybody else using the park.
Yep. Good. Go ahead, Counselor McLeod.
Thank you both, Morris and Paul. We've completed one phase. Now we're gonna get into another phase, aren't we? Which is fundraising and actually seeing it grow. So I'm a supporter and I hope that I can work with you as a citizen of our town, so...
We would greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, so all the best to you people and take care.
Yep, good.
One other comment. Jeff, I will make my notes available tomorrow. I'll email them to you.
Good.
Well, I was just wondering, when it comes to, I know, I know we're doing our capital budget in the next couple of weeks. Just what, Jeff, do we have to look at? And I know that's always a concern. And we're gonna have to, you know, there's continuous maintenance. And the other part is, you said 190-something thousand, Paul?
We're looking at, if I flip, what's on my page? The first phase is 102,500.
Okay.
And what we're asking the town to do totals about, according to the plan, 11,550. And that is part of your water management system for Argyle Street.
Yeah, okay.
Because otherwise, we could put in a four-inch culvert pipe, put dirt over it, and call it a walkway.
So is it appropriate this evening to refer that amount to budget? Okay, so that's the most appropriate thing to do, because we don't make decisions at the council table?
Yep. I totally expected that.
Yeah.
But we needed to get this meeting out of the way so that I can move forward with fundraising.
Certainly. Perfect. Any more questions for Paul or? Okay, good. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Okay, business arising. Didn't see anything there. New business, Mary Brown's Traffic. Counselor Dennis? Can you put your, yep, that's all right. Go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to have staff look into making the exit from Mary Brown's onto Charles Crosby Drive a right-hand turn only to keep traffic flowing instead of being backed up at busy times. Yeah, we've had quite a few people complaining that it gets pretty congested there. And it's because that people want to cross over to the other lane to go up to Walmer or to get out that way. So if they just went down to the lights, then they could, the lights.
Okay, thank you. Deputy?
Well, I was just looking at the motion, but I was just wondering if there's one, two, three other exits on that street, right? There's one coming from the Comfort Inn, one coming from the Superstore, and then one coming in from the top end of the parking lot. So I don't know if you, maybe you want to ask the traffic authority to look at the traffic flow on Charles Crosby Drive instead of doing the exit, because I think you'd take the exit into account anyways. But there's other exits out onto the street, too.
Yeah, so the traffic authority basically decides. And I think they, they've looked at it before. But we can, we could change it to say to, for traffic authority to look at it.
Yep.
What else were you gonna say there, Phil?
That's basically it, I think.
We had a planning report done on this thing.
Yeah, I know.
The planner recommended what's there now. I assume, I don't know, that the planning of, that the planner consulted with the traffic authority. But what I think, the motion is, if it's a request to have staff look at it, it's staff, traffic authority part of staff. I'd like to hear what the traffic authority says about it. But I don't think we should spend a whole bunch of money doing one of those traffic study things where you have to go to traffic count and all that. Give it a little time. It's only been open three or four weeks. Chicken's good, though.
But you know what? That's, that's a...
They're making it from scratch. It's more expensive than the other place in town.
It's been open, it's been open a few weeks. It's always busy anyway. You know what I'm gonna say, because I always say it, the town's getting busier. We have to learn how to deal with traffic. It's, for me, it's that simple.
I'm just bringing point...
Oh, yeah.
That people are complaining about, so...
Yeah. No, it's a good point. And, and if it's not Mary Brown, it's gonna be something. They're gonna complain about some other traffic issues. Go ahead.
So the question I have, just for clarity, there are now two exits from that property onto Charles Crosby Drive. And the question I have is, which one are we talking about? Are we talking about the one that was there previous all along? Or are we talking about the new one?
The new one.
The new one, okay. All right. And, okay, I'll leave it at that.
But if they did that, they could make both go right.
Well, one of the things that I, that I wanted to say about that, if it was sending all traffic right, is that one of the purposes of opening Charles Crosby Drive was to keep traffic off Stars Road that was going between those properties. If you force them to turn right as they're exiting, then they have no choice but to go down Stars Road if they're heading over to Walmer or Superstore, which was the original issue.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, so what's the, what's the motion going to be, though? As it is?
Yeah.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Request for presentation, respect youth engagement model. So Steve Paquette sent this in and is asking to, I believe it's Steve that wants to present.
I'll make a motion. We accept your request for proposal or presentation and do it at the next available time.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Tender portable flat deck screener. C A O.
Thank you, your worship. This was an item in your capital budget, actually, I believe, two years ago. And it was just, we're just going through the procurement process recently. So tenders were advertised on the provincial procurement site for the purchase of a new flat deck screener for the Public Works Department. Two responses were received, and the engineer summarizes them in his memo. After reviewing the tenders, it is recommended that the screener be purchased from the lowest tenderer, D J Manufacturing of Digby, in the amount of $44,650 plus H S T. And this was, as the engineer says, this was previously approved by council in the capital budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead, Counselor Dennis.
Is that the screener for the compost? Or is that a different type of screener?
No, your worship, the screener we're talking about here is for screening gravels and so on. So out behind the Public Works buildings, we have stockpiles of materials that have been taken out of excavations. And the intent here is that the screener could be used for screening some of that material and put it back into some productive use.
Okay, thank you.
And Counselor Hood?
How much did we have in the budget, C A O., for that item?
Go ahead, C A O.
Your worship, going from memory, I believe it was $45,000, so we're...
Boy.
So we're going with a gasoline engine instead of a diesel and a different make?
That's right.
What are we gonna do with the other $250, $350?
Well, it's the only way you make the budget, anyway, so...
Exactly.
That's the end of the questions now. So we're within budget. It would be another $6,000 to buy the diesel, which is over budget. Thank you.
Your worship, I believe if the, if the engineer had felt that the diesel one was worth spending the extra money, he typically would recommend that. So I have confidence that with his recommendation, that he's happy with that setup.
Good, okay. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Council advisory reports, Committee of the Whole. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship.
Can you put your?
Yes, thank you, your worship.
Your vote to be on TV.
Thank you, your worship.
You are welcome.
I make a motion that council accept the engineer's recommendation and award the work to C B C L to complete the geotechnical bathymetric survey preliminary engineering design and cost estimating of the two W A R F. repair options on Killam's W A R F. And implement the initial phase of the monitoring program.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Just glad you didn't get me to say bathymetric again.
Motion carried. Go ahead Deputy.
Your worship, I move that the Town of Yarmouth pension consultant be authorized to update the details of the rates to apply to the reciprocal transfer agreement and calculations as recommended.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? It already is in Russian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Worship, I move that council accept the amended R E N. intermunicipal agreement. And maybe just get maybe the C A O. or yourself, just to give us a little overview on that one, because I think it would be, it'd be interesting for the citizens out there that are looking in.
Your worship, after, I think we're in, we've completed two years of operation of the Regional Enterprise Network. We were the first to have one operational within the province. The District of Barrington, municipality of District of Barrington, is within our R E N. region, but chose initially not to join the R E N. for their own reasons. They more recently asked to join the R E N. So the amendments to the intermunicipal agreement make them a full partner and adjust the funding formula accordingly.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Question? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Worship, I move that the Town of Yarmouth send a letter of support for Yesta's bid to host the 2019, the 2022 Canadian Cross Country Running Championships.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I have a question. There was no money attached to that, was there? Not yet. Okay. That's right. Okay. Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Worship, I move that the Town of Yarmouth go to tender for fuel products as soon as possible.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Worship, I move that correspondence regarding kidney health month be received and placed on file.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question?
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Worship, I move that staff be directed to obtain information from our partner municipalities with regard to their grant process and tax exemption policies.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question?
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Cliff? Was it on this one?
I think, yeah, and I think there should be. He's gonna give a little overview, and I think maybe that's why. I was gonna ask for that, too.
Your worship, this is something that we discussed informally, at least, and formally in Committee of the Whole. There are many services that are provided within the town. There are many entities, buildings, clubs, schools, gosh knows what all, that not only provide services to the Town of Yarmouth and citizens of the town, but to the citizens of the adjoining areas. We are required under the Assessment Act to grant tax exemptions to a number of buildings that are set out in the Assessment Act, churches and the like. And I sometimes think when we look at the ask that we had here, for instance, this year, the Town of Yarmouth received applications from upwards of 40-odd organizations. And their, their ask was $205,406. At the end of that process, we had budgeted $70,000. Council, each counselor goes through that list and does its best on an individual basis to come up with a number. But the ask requests range from a high of $23,000, which would have been almost, almost half of the amount budgeted, 40-odd percent of it, to as modest a request as $500. So what we don't know in these deliberations is how much our sister municipalities are contributing to the organizations. And so when an organization, for instance, asks for $21,000, we don't know if they're budgeting to get part from us and part from another one, or how much. I do know that after examining some financial statements that we require to be provided, that in one circumstance, the town put up over $10,000 last year, and our sister municipalities put up something in the order of four, to give an example, on an ask of over $20,000. So when you look at that and you realize, it really becomes a situation where I think we should sit down with our fellow municipal unison- we should sit down with our fellow municipal units and look into perhaps coordinating our process of applying the grants. Because most of these organizations, I'm sure, are either resident of, partly resident of, either Argyle or Yarmouth Municipality. So that was the source of the motion that came forward from. And I don't want to go into this in any more detail, except to say that there are other organizations in town that require our support. And just so the public knows, we have institutions here who have asked for tax grants totaling two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars, and that doesn't include the ones that are exempted, which are many. I mean, you talk about the wars, the schools, it goes on and on and on. It's a huge burden for the town, and I think we need to do something about it. So I'll be supporting the motion, for sure.
Thank you.
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your Worship, I move that correspondence be sent to the Minister of Health regarding the plan to remove the ear, eye, nose, and throat specialist position from the Yarmouth, and if this plan is in the works, that the minister be requested to look into and reconsider this plan with a view to making the position permanent in our regional hospital in Yarmouth.
I second the motion, Your Worship.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Deputy. Citizen advisory committees? Councilor McLeod, recommendations for public hearing?
Thank you, Your Worship. Earlier this evening from our public hearing, I want, I move to amend the MPS and the LUB to permit up to eight units in total, where the approval is by site planning process. Where the total number of units exceeds eight, or the number of building exceeds four, the approval process is by development agreement. The approval process followed must be by mutual agreement, so this does not prevent the development officer from requiring that the approval for a proposal that is lower than these limits proceed by development agreement, as outlined in our planner's report.
Seconded. Morris, would you like to come speak to this? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship and members of council. Currently, the land use by law restricts the total number of units in a group dwelling situation, which means there are a number of, can be a number of dwellings that are on one site. It restricts them to six units, and we've had a request to expand that to eight units, which allows for, say, two-four unit buildings, or you could have up to four buildings on the lot. And we felt that was a reasonable request. It doesn't materially affect the density of the area. And I know there was an issue raised with respect to the architecture and all that, but again, I don't think there was any objection to the change from six to eight. So it was recommended, and it's gone through the process.
Okay. I have a question. I probably know the answer to this, but I get varying answers. So the architecture in some of these spots, and, you know, Mrs. Cassidy gave us a list of streets, for example, and really, those streets, they represent communities. That's how I look at it. Do we have something in place that says, in the midst of these beautiful historic buildings, you can't put a one-story bungalow? Do we have that yet?
What we have in place is a, in the bylaw, is that if you propose to have an infilling project, that it should respect the architecture of the area.
Okay. Should?
And the, it's up to the development officer to look at that and decide. The way the bylaw works, it's as outlined here. Development can proceed by site plan approval. However, under site plan approval, you can't control architecture. And that's why the provision is there, that if there's not mutual agreement, the development officer may bring it forward under a development agreement, which does allow you to get into some of the architectural use. So we wanted to speed up the approval process, which was part of the whole background of rewriting your MPS and LUB. And that decision was made to allow for approval by site plan agreement. Site plan allows you to control landscaping and all this stuff on the property, drainage and all of those things, but doesn't allow you to control architecture. So it's really up to the development officer, talking to the developer, saying, you know, I don't think you're respecting the architecture of the area, since then if they can't reach mutual agreement, it comes to council under a development agreement process. So that's the check and balance that's built into the system there. But there are some general guidelines of infilling that you should respect the architecture of the area. It's a very difficult part of planning, and I, in my career, I've been involved in many discussions on the whole issue of architectural control, and many things have been required. But I think there is a check and balance there that would impact on the older areas if something comes forward.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Hood?
So my question is this, the, is this amendment being sought as a result of an application by a developer? Is this something that was just done to better position our bylaw?
The initiation for the change came from a project being built by Andrew Cameron on Alice Road. There are two four-unit buildings, they're actually under construction, but the agreement is that if this amendment doesn't go through, they will be joined together, and in effect, they will, under the law, be one building. But there's really no reason to make the connection. It's not serving any useful purpose. This allows the two four-unit buildings to go forward, and other ones. But that was the background and initiation behind the request.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And recommendation from PAC, March 7th. Go ahead, Councilor.
So we have two items, number, the first one is, I moved, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use by law to permit the establishment of a microbrewery at 270th Street, as outlined in Morris's report.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion?
Your Worship, could I just make a comment?
Yes, please.
While the request and the document refers to a specific property, the amendment in effect allows a microbrewery anywhere in the central business district, so...
Thank you.
I want to clarify that, because I think it may become...
Yeah, you probably saw me shaking my head. Why are you being so specific here? Because it was to open it up.
Well, it was initiated by that, somebody who was looking to buy that property, but it does apply to the entire central business district.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. Any more discussion? Questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
The other item, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use by law to rezone the town-owned property at 28 Jarvis Road from comprehensive development to open space, as outlined in Morris's report.
Paul's here, we better say yes to this one.
Yeah.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, Councilor. Reports for, thank you, Morris. Reports for information. Mayor's report. Questions for committee chairs. So Deputy, you had a couple of things you want to bring up there?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think the first one is maybe to the CAO, what is the timeline on the internal audit? And maybe you can give us an update, maybe at the committee of the whole, and just, and give us the timeline and...
Yeah, it's on my to-dos on our priority list, and it's set for April. So that's our goal.
Okay. That'd be April council meeting?
It'd be April, committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole, okay. Thank you.
Good. And did you want to do that real estate one here?
Yeah, the other one, Your Worship, I, if anybody noticed, over the last couple of weeks, I'm doing my Cliff, I'm doing my Councilor Hood, I'm doing my Vic Aldridge. Mansion sale brings out buyers, high-end house hunters from US to Arnold Look Elsewhere after the property, I think it was in Newport Landing or up by Avonport, sold.
Big yes.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity, if we can talk to Natalie at the next committee of the whole about how we list maybe heritage properties, older properties, properties that are super large. I know, I just wrote down a couple. I know we have some on, like Park Street, I know we have some on Cliff Street, some beautiful, big old properties, some on the upper end of Pleasant Street, and also on Prospect Street that are, you know, a hundred to a hundred and fifty years old, and that would be a bargain when you see what the prices of houses are in Toronto and Vancouver. You know, when you're paying a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for a three-thousand square foot house, it's a, and if you're paying one-point-five, six, seven, eight, nine, two million dollars for an eight-hundred-foot square bungalow in Toronto, it's a bargain. I'm just wondering how we get the word out to people across the country that moving to southwestern Nova Scotia is a great bargain.
So do we need a motion to put that on committee of the whole, for Natalie to, just to ask, talk to Natalie about that, or just...
I'll make a motion, we ask the development officer for a recommendation on real estate investment opportunities in Yarmouth, and probably not only would it include Yarmouth, I'd say Yarmouth and Yarmouth County, but Yarmouth in particular.
Moved and seconded? Go ahead, Councilor Hood.
It's time for a story. So that's the Mounce property, M-O-U-N-C-E. Ken Mounce was the son of the original Mounce, and he grew up there. Ken Mounce worked for Ralph Medjuck. Ralph Medjuck developed the first, an apartment complex out by, as it then was, Simpsons in Halifax. Joan and I had a baby in nineteen sixty-two, Jocelyn, and we needed a place to stay. I'd rented a downstairs flat that summer, and it was really not very good, I can tell you. But anyway, I didn't have much money, but I didn't have any money. There was no much, but, so anyway, had the baby, and the baby stayed with mom, and we got the apartment, and we took two girls in that we knew from Salmon River. They took one room. Morris Monroe lent me enough money to, or lent me the furniture. There was no money involved, and said, pay me when you can. I moved the furniture up. So I provided the furniture. We took one bedroom. When Jocelyn came up, she went in there, and we bounced her in the crib, and off we went. So Ken Mounce, so I didn't have money, and I mean, this place was like a hundred and, we took it, a basement apartment, the cheapest one, and it was like a hundred and ten dollars, which was a lot of money. And we managed, and Ken Mounce gave me a break. So that's my Ken Mounce story. He was a grand, a young executive, a good guy, and, you know, I remember being three months behind in the rent in the middle of the winter, when the tips were like two bucks coming home on a Friday night, you know, and he'd wait. There were a good, there's my story.
Did you pay Chester for the furniture?
I did. I did, but it took a long time, and that's another story. We'll save that for another night.
That'll be next, Councilor.
Yeah. See, if he wouldn't have become a lawyer, and he would have sold drugs like Jim.
I didn't pay Chester, I paid Morris.
Morris, that's right.
And maybe Claudia was the one that chased me, hired us to get it.
Oh, my dear. That's hilarious. See, Jim? If he wouldn't have become a lawyer, he would have become a drug pusher like you, then he would have been able to pay that off even quicker. You better tell people you're a promising...
I can follow up on some of that. So I'll say my story for the committee of the whole, though.
Okay. Oh, my goodness. That was on Facebook. It went everywhere. What a beautiful...
Thirty-two thousand...
Thirty-two thousand shares or something?
Thirty-six thousand shares, or a few days ago.
Beautiful. Beautiful. Okay, so we're gonna do that, did we, no, we didn't?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. I don't know if we voted to get you more money, or we voted off.
I couldn't resist it back.
Oh, my dear. That's hilarious. Okay, so those were your two, Deputy? You good?
I'm good.
All right. And then the additions, the only addition we had really was the grants to organizations. And so I'm gonna make sure with the CAO, that the motion would be to accept. Go ahead.
So Your Worship, just for the benefit of the public, what we do with our grants process is we receive the applications, they're distributed to council. Councils individually deliberate on how much money of the available budget they would allocate to each applicant. This year, we met and discussed those allocations, as it was the first time through for some counselors, and council felt that was desirable, that's their prerogative. And so the results of those deliberations were submitted to Linda. Linda put all of the allocations on a single spreadsheet, and what we typically do is the spreadsheet allows, it shows what the average allocation is for each group. So what we ask council to do is to propose a motion to award those grants for next fiscal year, and we would round them up to the nearest ten dollars.
Seconded. Go ahead, Deputy.
And a question to the CAO, or maybe you can give us another comment on what they bring us when they apply for a grant, refinales, money in the bank, and other things, so what our policy is if they have money in the bank and they ask for a grant. Can you just go a little bit on that, please?
Sure. So the applicants are asked to tell us who they are, give us some detail around the organization, but also tell us what their plans are for the money if they're successful in receiving the grant they request. We ask for financial information within our policy. We ask for the financial statements, including a balance sheet. Council, as I mentioned, the counselors deliberate individually. There are provisions within our policy for individuals to receive grants, but there is a, there is a provision that grants may be reduced. So obviously, every organization has varying levels of need and financial resources, and so because we never have enough money to meet everybody's needs, we do have a policy statement that says that council may reduce the grant to any organization that has surplus, in other words, money, financial resources of their own. And so I think that is what you were asking about. So our policy is circulated with the application form to every applicant, so they should be aware of all of the requirements and the policy statements around the grant process.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm, I'd love to see us take another look at how we do this, too. There's lots of options, so maybe in the next six months or so, before we start to dig in, we can sit...
That has a lot to do with the motion that Council Hood brought up, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, they got hand in hand.
Yeah. And how do you focus, how do you focus that little amount of money to make the most impact? Okay, so any, any more discussion?
Question?
Did someone second that motion?
Yes.
Linda, you good? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And did you, you mentioned that the checks don't go out until after, just so anyone watching isn't waiting.
So the requirements, Your Worship, for the grant process, the MGA requires that grants awarded by the council need to be advertised in the newspaper, so it's a very transparent process. So this whole list, Linda will put it together, and it will be advertised in an upcoming edition of our local paper. But in addition to that, council has been proactive the last few years in making these grant decisions in the first three months of the fiscal, sorry, of the calendar year, but the grants themselves will not be awarded or mailed out. Checks cut until April 1st in the next fiscal year. So we're actually approving the grants as part of our budgeting process, and once April 1st hits, these grants can be awarded. The exception is the, we do have a section of our grants process that people apply, or The exception is, we do have a section of our grants process that people apply, or groups apply to, that have real property and owe property taxes. And so because we do our tax billing in two installments, we don't send a percent of the grant right away. We offset, according to your decisions, the amount of taxes if it covers the entire first bill, and if it covers the entire second bill at that time.
Good. Okay. Did we vote on that? We did. Okay, we did. I think so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried twice. Okay, so approval of invoices?
So move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Date of next meeting is April 13th, and we just have one property matter.
Will we go in camera, your worship?
Will we go in camera? I am gonna say this for everybody that's listening, happy March break from all of us. And if you go on yarmouthrecreation.ca, they have a ton of things that families and individuals[1763.03]